Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 9th, 2025, and amended on March 6th, 2025. And by posting the notice in the Forkett River and Lenoco Harbor post offices and by filing a copy of the notice with Lacey Township Clerk as requested by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call, please.
Mr. Armato?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Armato?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Conity?
Here.
And Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Okay, we're going to go into executive session. Be resolved that an executive session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, including but not limited to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload, and confidential personnel matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of executive session is estimated to be approximately 60 minutes, after which the Board shall reconvene and proceed with business at 7:00 PM. Action may be taken. Motion?
Motion, Peters.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ayes have it.
Okay, we're going to resume the meeting. Before we start tonight, I'd like to sincerely express my condolences to the Saletti family. Dave Saletti served a three-year term on this Board starting in 2016. He was an excellent Board member. He listened, compromised, and always put the students first. He was dedicated husband, father, and dedicated his life to helping others through his profession as well as volunteering his time to his community. He truly loved the people he served. His infectious smile and warm presence drew people in and will greatly be missed. On the business-related front, by now we all know, we are all aware, that the referendum did not pass by only a few hundred votes for question one. Over the past week, I have heard many reasons and concerns of why we were not successful. The most repetitive concerns were regarding the economy, tax fatigue among voters, not enough information, and voting down one to block two and three. The turf was in full opposition from every conversation as an unnecessary want. There were many more reasons, but those were the most repetitive. So now what? Where do we go? So now what? Where do we go from here? Do we try again in November? Or do we pivot? The referendum committee, Sal Armato, Linda Walker, and Chairperson Skip Peters, will be tasked to meet again. I believe fact-finding through community outreach to see where the components were of why we failed, but more importantly, compiling a priority list of what they will support. We cannot give up. We need to press forward so Lacey schools have the ability to provide a safe, clean environment that we can all be proud of. The stake hovering 40% of the cost, to me, sounds much better option than to avoid a bond, which will be fully borne by the taxpayer. Hopefully, by the next meeting, we'll have some more information for everyone. I would also like to address some social media guidelines the Board has been recommended to follow by the New Jersey school boards that has not changed since I have been on the Board in the past five years. I'm mentioning this because of the misconceptions I've seen in the past week. We do not conduct any Board business on social media, none. We operate with the majority, the public majority rules here in public. As Board President, if I happen to see something about the district, my response may say, "Please call the Board Office, and we can discuss your concerns." Mr. Zalinski has been saying this since he took the seat as Acting Superintendent. He encourages it. All of your questions will be answered, and there is a procedure, and it's not on Facebook. One Board Member cannot make a decision, including the President. It's the majority. I do understand the perception of not responding feels like you are being ignored or we are hiding something. It's far from the truth. We just can't. There were so many incorrect statements, assumptions, and questions I could have easily answered regarding the referendum. It's frustrating for me as well. We just understand we have rules to follow, and again, no Board business will be performed on social media platform. As a private citizen, we are free to post, but we still have guidelines to follow. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to our representatives.
Tonight, I'm going to start us off with our monthly update from the Student Government Association. SGA last met on March 3rd. The Freshmen's Talent Show was a huge success. The Juniors Volleyball Tournament was held on March 6th, and they are currently planning their end-of-the-year activities and fundraisers, including Kisses Senior Goodbye, Powder Puff, and Junior Prom. The Seniors are likewise working on their end-of-the-year activities, including the Senior Breakfast, the Senior Raffle, and Senior Prom. For the Executive Board, the 2025-2026 SGA elections will take place in April, and our Mr. Lacey fundraiser is currently being advertised. Lastly, our next SGA meeting will take place on April 7th.
Thank you, Kayla. Now, for the month of March, we would like to announce our unsung hero as Jordan Martin. Jordan is not here with us today. Jordan is not here with us today, but I will read a little bit about her. For the month of March, the senior class would like to recognize Jordan Martin as our unsung hero. Jordan is a passionate student who exemplifies what it means to be a go-getter. While exceeding expectations in the classroom, she also shines outside of it. Besides her good grades and her position as Vice President of DECA here at our school, you could probably find her on the football field for varsity cheer, something she has dedicated herself to for most of her life. Jordan's determination to succeed and capability to do so makes her a great pick for our unsung hero. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. Now, we'll have our Superintendent report, please.
And as always, I'll invite Principal King to present our Seniors of the Month for the month of February, excuse me, March.
Good evening, everyone. As always, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our Seniors of the Month this month for March. We have three. Our first Senior of the Month is Natalie McGovern. Natalie! A round of applause for her family and friends who are here as well.
Hi, I'm Natalie McGovern, and I am proud to be named March's Senior of the Month at Lacey Township High School.
Congratulations to Natalie McGovern, being Student of the Month. We're all very proud of you.
At Lacey Township High School, I am involved in SGA. I'm the Executive Board Vice President. I'm NHS's Tutoring Chair. I'm also a member of Interact, and I am part of Lacey Township High School Women's Soccer Team.
I'm so excited for Natalie as she moves on. She planned on studying Biology at Monmouth University, and I'm super excited for her future, next year and beyond.
My favorite memories at high school was winning state sectionals my freshman year in soccer.
One of my favorite things about Natalie shows up outside of school but in my semi-classroom as well is that Natalie is incredibly competitive, in all the best ways. Natalie, I remember in AP Environmental Science class, every single test would be like a competition amongst her peers to do the best that she possibly could amongst her peers. And that's one of the things that I think drives her success in the classroom and outside the classroom.
My future plans are to attend Monmouth University, to play Division I soccer, and to major in Biology.
So congratulations again to Natalie McGovern. We're so excited for you for the rest of your year, but also as you move along next year to study Biology at Monmouth University. We're all very excited for you and look forward to hearing about your future.
All right, our next Senior of the Month is Diego Andrade. I'm sorry, Diego, come on up. Come on up, Diego.
I'm Diego Andrade, and I'm proud to be named March's Senior of the Month at Lacey Township High School.
Oh, hey, Diego. Congratulations on winning Senior of the Month.
I'm heavily involved in the school's TV station, WLTS, and we film everything from choir concerts to sports games.
There are so many moments you've been a part of in our school, whether it's been behind the camera or in front of the camera onstage. These halls are sincerely going to miss you when you graduate.
I think a lot of my favorite memories from high school stem from digital media, and a notable memory I have is from last year when we all split up into groups and did the NJHS Film Challenge and had a screening of the films at Jackson Library, which was really cool.
Getting to know you these past three years has been wonderful. Each year, you continue to amaze me. Your gifts of writing transcends the classroom into script and songs. The world needs these gifts, Diego.
Outside of school, I like to write films and make movies with my friends, and I'm also very into music production, and I have my own mini home studio.
I have three top favorite memories. One, when you were singing for the Christmas show, and to warm up, you were playing Radio head, and everyone was singing along. Two, when we used the school over spring break to film your movie for the film festival titled Crumbs that went on to win awards. Seeing your success was my success.
I'm looking forward to continuing studying film and television production at a four-year university and hopefully minor in music theory or music production.
Bad days are good. Being a part of your life has been an absolute gift, and I can't wait to see all the good things you're going to create in this world. Congratulations again on winning Senior of the Month.
Mr. King? Can you have him share the title of the movie again that he wrote and filmed?
Oh, yeah, what was the name of the movie? It's called Crumbs. Crumbs?
Crumbs, like coffee cake crumbs? I'm hungry, that's why I used that as an example.
All right, our next Senior of the Month is our Vocational Senior of the Month, Ariana Green. Ariana, come on over. Come on over, Ariana. Let's go. Round of applause for her family who's in attendance this evening. Yep?
Hello, I'm Ariana Green. I am proud to be March's Senior of the Month.
So excited to hear that Ariana had gotten Senior of the Month, although I can't say that I was surprised. Ariana is creative, she's bright, she brings such an amazing energy everywhere that she goes. I remember when I had her for Biology, she would come in and absolutely crush her Biology tests and then pull out her mandolin and start serenading the class on songs that she had been working on. She's just an amazing balance of so many different things.
If you couldn't tell, I'm kind of all over the place. I like to do a lot of nature, anything with nature, hiking, exploring. I do a lot of music. I play the guitar, the electric and acoustic guitar, the piano, and ukulele, and I do a lot of art stuff. I'm in fashion design and merchandising at vocational schools, so I do a lot of fashion stuff and anything with illustrations, pretty much anything, surfing, snowboarding, anything that I can get my hands on or learn, I will try to do.
Ariana is kind, she's creative, she's bright, she just has this air of confidence and brings so much positive energy into whatever room she's in. She's the first person to take someone under her wing and guide them and demonstrate leadership roles. She's just got a lot going for her. She's such a gem.
I've decided to do as much as possible and help as many people while doing that, but I think right now with everything you could, you should do what makes you happy, and money was never really a thought in it. So I always wanted to do flight attendings so I could travel, but I know with everything that I like to do, it can definitely change, and yeah, I think I'm just going to let the wind take me where it takes me.
Ariana, best of luck to you and all that you do. I have absolutely no doubts that whatever you put your mind to, you will be successful at.
All right, Mr. Zalinski, that concludes my comments this evening.
Thank you, Principal King. As always, great to bring those students to us. We need that. So now, we're going to transition to our tentative budget report. So Ms. Sharon Ormsby, who is our Business Administrator, is going to come up to the podium, and we're going to see her slideshow and talk about it.
All right, good evening, everybody. We're going to talk about the tentative budget for 2025, 2026. So I want to just talk real quick about the impact of the state aid cuts over the past seven years. So the district's seen over $14 million of state aid cuts over the past seven years. That's been really impactful for us. You know, when we talk about the maximum increase in tax levy of only 2%, which is equivalent to only $1 million, we talk about trying to recoup revenue of $14 million that has been taken away from us. We can't recoup that kind of money when we can only raise $1 million each year. So in seven years, there's no way that we can recoup that loss. And then when you talk about the expenses that have also gone up over that timeframe, we've got contractual responsibilities that rise above 2%, higher utility prices, increases in insurance premiums, tuition increases, transportation cost increases, inflation, just overall inflation, we can't keep up.
I like this slide here too, where it says that these were erratic cuts upon our district over those years that you see up there. We actually were part of lawsuits with the state of New Jersey trying to sue for the formula so that it wouldn't be so erratic, so we would know what formula they were using. So every year, we would know what we were going to get cut, so we could plan that. So the state refused to turn over their formula to us. Then when they finally did turn it over to all the districts that sued them, the formula wouldn't work, no figure. So when you see these erratic cuts here, all of them, every year, came to our district, our town, as a surprise. So try planning with every year to do surprise and not do nothing. Okay, so that was a good slide that I put on there.
Right, and we want to show the comparison too of, this is a 66% reduction in aid over this timeframe and only a 10% reduction in enrollment. That's a huge discrepancy in those reductions. So the actual tentative budget for 25-26. So our operating budget's going to be $76,114,034, which is about 5% higher than this year. Our grants and entitlements will be $9,78,347, which is about 15% higher. The majority of that is the PEA increase. And then the debt service is actually lower at $2,349,850. Now, that is the debt falling off, which we talked extensively about when we were going through the referendum. We've got debt falling off, which is how we were able to do a tax-neutral question in the first question. So that's about a 28% reduction in our debt service aid. All right, property tax levy. Our current property tax levy is at $58,459,029. With a 2% increase, that's the 1.1 million, that's going to bring our property tax levy to $59,628,210. Our debt service property tax levy is at $2,739,05. That is a reduction of 24%. We have a health benefit waiver that we're able to take advantage of this year because our health benefits are going up over $3 million. So we can add that to the tax levy. That's going to increase the tax levy an additional 1.5%. So our total property tax levy will be $63,139,99. The net percentage increase is 3.15%. Now, the health benefit increase, that waiver, I just wanted to explain that a little bit. So what happens is there's an increase in the state health benefits that's 14%, and then they take into account that 2% increase, that statutory increase, so that reduces it down to 12%. We're actually allowed to go up to 12% higher in the tax levy. We're obviously not going that high. We're only using the 1.4 and only doing 1.15, but we were able to go up 12%. This is just going to be a quick review of the revenues. There's a couple of things I just want to highlight here. So this year, we got 6% more in state aid. This year, they actually instituted a 6% cap on the state aid and a 3% cap, a 6% increase cap and a 3% decrease cap. So we got 6% more in our state aid. When they actually calculated our state aid this year, we should have gotten $2 million more in state aid, but because they instituted this 6% cap, we're only getting $435,000 more. Now, had they put these two caps in place seven years ago, that 3% cap would have helped us tremendously. We would have $10 million more in state aid this year had they instituted that 3% reduction cap. That's huge. $10 million more we would have. Fund balance, I want to point out, we've exhausted our fund balance. We have no excess surplus this year to utilize. Adjustment aid, at this point right now, we don't know if there'll be any adjustment aid for us to be able to utilize. Misceleineous revenue is down. For the past two years, we've gotten donation from the MUA in town. We're not getting that this year. We've had SREC sales that we've been able to utilize for years now. We will not have that any longer. That expires in June of this year. That's about $400,000 that we no longer will have. And then the elephant in the room, the land sale slash deficit. We've got $6 million that we're still short in our budget. So we're hoping, and we're working, with appraisers and land surveyors to sell land. $6 million. That's where we are.
Let's make it very clear to all of you said, we are here to facilitate, and nothing nobody in this room did, whether you're here, whether you're here, whether you're Sharon herself, you take away $14 million out of somebody's budget or out of a business, covering that without selling items, which we obviously do not do, is impossible. So that drain on the taxpayers of Lacey continues. There's nobody to blame but the state of New Jersey. You may hear other things tonight, but this is the state of New Jersey, and what they've done to us, straight up. Okay, taken away all that money so quickly, without ever giving us a chance to do anything about it, without ever sharing with us the formulas of state aid losses, not capping state aid losses like they do now, because now they see their mistake and how bad it's going to be for districts like Tom River, Jackson, South Plainfield, New Egypt. The list is getting longer by the death of districts like ours who are unable to balance our books with the statutory 2% property tax cap and then the health waiver that's in ours this year, which we don't get every year. State of New Jersey, 100%. Okay, I'll appeal to you many times, call everybody you know, right? There's nobody saving us from the state right now. That's why you see that, as Sharon so aptly referred to, the elephant in the room that was $6.186882 short and making up what we're supposed to do next year. I'm going to give you the statistics behind that, okay, on how good we've been, yet we're still that much short. If they put that cap in, did you say it already, that we'd be $10 million to the good, if that cap was in place at the beginning of that stint, okay, we'd be in much better shape and able to deal with our commitments. Very important, thank you.
So back to the grants and entitlements. So the good news, with the PEA, we're getting about 5% more in funding for the PEA. We're going to have 27 classrooms next year. That's two additional classrooms for the preschool, and we're going to have 405 students in that program. Downside on the grant side, with all the problems on the federal government side, they're advising us to budget 75% of our current funding for IDEA and for title funding. Normally, we budget about 85% of the current funding, so there's been a cut in that funding, which means what we normally do is we budget tuition, services, salaries from the general budget into the grants budgets. So some of that has now had to go back into the general budget, so that's eating into, you know, some of our general budget now. It's about $500,000 that we've had to put back into the general budget. So that's, you know, a problem for us as well. So now we'll look at, this is some overall appropriations. So our salaries, about $50 million. Our benefits are up 18% at $15.7 million, which is, again, that's over $3 million increase from this year. Our natural gas and electric are both up 25%. Property and casualty insurance is up 25%. We've got added district tuition over $2.2 million. Now, our athletic and co-curricular and our transportation, those are both not including salaries at $3.34 and 1.4, and then everything else, that supplies, that's technology, services. Now, the one thing I want to note about salaries, that number does not include increases for LTEA, CST, and then online. Reductions. We've cut three certified positions, three power positions, a custodian. We moved eight aides from our general fund into our cafeteria fund. Technology reductions, laptop and classroom display replacements. This is really just moving necessary technology needs down the line, $538,000. Supplies, this is instructional, athletic, and health supplies that we've cut. And then services, this is ground services and aide-in-law.
This slide's important because if you went back to last year's slide, where we've cut 34 certificated positions, there's just nothing left to cut. Yet we still did the best we could. We worked with all our managers, as Sharon has insisted upon here, to make sure we are as lean, I'll say it like this, and as lean as we possibly can be every step of the way. And we'll get to some other slides that's really going to demonstrate that in a second to show you how lean and mean we actually are here at Lacey, you know, and trying not to limit what we have to do. Again, we'll go back to that slide, who's put us in this position. It certainly isn't anybody here, it's the state of New Jersey.
All right, so as Mr. Zalinski mentioned, we're going to talk about how lean we are. So our budgetary per pupil costs for this budget, $18,407. We're $1,747 below the statewide average. We are eighth lowest budgetary per pupil amongst our peers as far as districts our size. We're the seventh lowest out of the state of New Jersey, which is 656 districts.
Let's say that one more time. We're 77 out of 656, lowest, lowest here in Lacey.
Administrative per pupil costs, $1,480. It's $1,197 below the southern regional limit. We are the sixth lowest, again, for our size school district, as at a 90%. We are the sixth lowest, again, for our size school district, that's out of 96. And we are the 13th lowest out of 656 districts. That's out of the state.
I don't know how much better we get that. Not by hunch. 13th out of 656. Lowest. And to root that, okay, we're also on the highest teacher-to-pupil ratios in Ocean County. I don't have this year's statistics from everywhere else, I'll get them. Overtime, we've grown, in two years, we've gone from 11-1 to 13-1. Okay, we're the highest in Ocean County, we're equal with districts that don't have preschool. In preschool, we limit the numbers of kids that go in there by rule. So now we're not only high, we're at par with districts that don't have preschool. Is that to mean that our teachers have the most kids on average? Okay, when you look at districts K to 12, okay, we're not telling our regional districts and those others. Okay, they generally have a lower number than we do. So 13-1, we're the highest ratios especially in Ocean County.
And we just wanted to reiterate this again. We've lost over 14 million in seven years. So our next steps, this budget's due, this tentative budget's due to the county tomorrow. We're gonna continue exploring increased revenue streams, decreased appropriations. Our public hearing for our final budget adoption is April 29th. The final due date is May 15th. And thank you for listening to me, and this will be on the website.
Alright, we'll take a quick break for students who want to go. I'll let you out, is that alright? And then we'll continue, I guess, with, and then I'll have some comments before. If anybody wants to go, I'd check that, please.
Hey, congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
What's up, brother, how you doing? Congratulations.
Quick comment, then we'll move on. Yes, please, and then I'll reserve some stuff for later, I'll do the, alright, we're good? Alright, so a couple of comments and then I'll give up my turn here. Alright. You just had the tentative budget presentation, when everybody reminded that it's not the final budget presentation, that happens in April. The storm's date is April? 29th, I keep getting it wrong, 29th. That'll be the final budget adoption. Anything and everything is subject to change between tentative and final. The board is committed to working really hard, they've already been working really hard trying to come up with a proper budget solution here. Our district is deeply committed to providing the best education possible while being responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars. Our per pupil cost stands at 16,758, which is the eighth lowest among districts of similar size, 77th lowest statewide out of 656 districts in New Jersey. Our spending is $3,396 below the state average and $2,232 below the state median, demonstrating our focus on efficiency. This commitment to efficiency extends to our administrative operations, where our per pupil cost is $1,397 and ranks as the sixth lowest or seventh lowest in our peer group. Okay, and the 13th lowest in the entire state of New Jersey. Okay, while we have seen a 10% reduction in enrollment, which you've already heard since 2018, we've experienced a monumental decrease of state aid of 66%. This presents considerable financial challenge and we're attempting to actively address through careful resource management. Additionally, Lacey Township School District maintains a teacher-to-pupil ratio of 13-1 for the 23-24 school year, which is one of the highest in Ocean County. This means we, of course, have the largest class sizes overall. Furthermore, I don't think it was mentioned before, our transportation department is also recognized as the 13th most efficient in the state. 13th most efficient. Can imagine how many transportation departments there are in the state of New Jersey. Had the state acted responsibly and instituted a 3% cap on state aid cuts seven years ago at the beginning of S2, we'd have $10 million more. That being said, even posed with the challenge of diminishing state aid and the general tax levy increase over the past 12 years, including last year's 9.9%, Lacey overall has kept the tax increase to 3.11% average. I'd let that stand up to any district over the last 12 years. Okay, Lacey still has the 11th lowest tax bill in Ocean County out of 33 towns, just to note. Despite challenges posed by reduced state funding, these figures clearly illustrate our district's unwavering commitment to maximizing the value of every dollar spent to benefit our students and community. A side note from my report, we are extremely disappointed, as Ms. Claus said, at the results of the referendum, and we're gonna be revisiting all the projects in the upcoming months because most of the needs that were outlined in the referendum have not disappeared. I look forward to working with the board and the public to solve some of our most pressing infrastructure problems. Some of the online conversation was interesting. One of the most interesting that I found, and I don't read a lot of it, was centered on the release of the bid specs during the referendum. On advice of counsel and being no strangers to the Oprah process, the Oprah exemption specifically reads, "Information which if disclosed would give an advantage to competitors or bidders, including detailed or itemized cost estimates, prior to bid opening, are specifically listed as an Oprah exemption." Why the state of New Jersey decided not to do that is beyond me. I don't answer to the state of New Jersey like that. I do believe that whoever requested these documents and released them to the public had the potential to cost Lacey millions of dollars by doing so. Okay? We as a district, and that's the reason we did not release these figures, because we wanted to make sure we are good stewards of your money. Okay, so why the state did that, I don't know. I don't think the state, I think that's demonstrated here tonight, has our best interests in mind. I think that's pretty obvious, okay, by what we've been talking about this evening. That's all for now, I have a chance later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we can schedule another budget workshop before we do our final budget. We did have a budget workshop last week, last Wednesday, open to the public. We would love to have some input. We talked openly about what was going on. The problem was, only one person came. So that was everybody's opportunity to come in and contribute to the budget, get your questions answered, and there was no participation. So we'll have a new, one person. But we will, again, post another one, and it was advertised. The last board meeting, I advertised the date, and we'll try again. So we want people's input, you just need to come in and share. Okay, now we're moving on to. Hold on one second. Now we're moving on to public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand and when called upon, state their name, address, or affiliation and intention to make a statement. Comments will be addressed to the board president. Comments will be made one issue at a time. Comments will be limited to five minutes. No audience member shall be recognized twice until we have, until you have wished, until all who have wished to comment have been recognized. This portion of the meeting is for public comment only. There will be no questions answered. The purpose of this board meeting is for us to perform our business in public. Everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the board, there's an established chain of command. Would anybody like to have a public comment? Okay, come on up.
Paul Dresser, 70 Harbury Drive in Forkett River, Seabreeze. What you guys do is great. I really believe it's a thankless job and I appreciate what you guys do on behalf of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Ron.
I'll get you.
Take your time.
My name is Ron Martin, live in 44 Dunbury in Forkett River. And I echo my compatriot's words. I just like to, every operation that I've been in, we always have a win-loss review. And it's interesting when the win occurs. It's because of, I was in a sales organization, I should preface that, a national one, that was my responsibility. When we won a big bid, it was because of salespersonship. When we lost a bid, which was very, very rare, we didn't have product, we didn't have quality of product, we didn't have the right color, blank, blank, all the way down the line. So what I'd like to be able to do is just pass on some information that I've received over the past. The general opinion that I hear is that the budget failed because of item three. Item three appeared to be a wish list as opposed to a need. There have been conversations about looking at what we have, okay? The reluctance to vote on one and two came about because of the liability of three. I would make some suggestions. One is, should another referendum come up, which I believe it will, that in the meetings we have, that our acting superintendent had before the regular meetings, that we explain one time and one time only what each of the questions are. Because of the meetings we attended, it was a repetition. We lost 30 minutes of Q&amp;A for the people who came in who had not had the privilege of a first or a second meeting. And so that was vital time lost. I would recommend that we video the transparency meetings as they were referred to so that those who didn't make a meeting could watch it on the TV and get answers, or at least knowledge to the questions that they have. There were a lot of good questions that came up. The fear in the negative vote was because of question three. When we look at what we experienced last year, 9.95% tax increase, the question three, particularly the turf field, seemed way out of place. And it appeared to be an oversight on the part of the board on the high tax increase we got last year. I don't think it was malicious, I don't think it was intended, but the fact of the matter is, as a result of that appearing, people were reluctant to vote one because one opened the door for two and three. And as a consequence, it was self-defeating. And that's why the turnout, in my opinion, turned out to be what it was. So when we look at the total dollar amount of the 90 million, approximately $90 million, a third of that, basically a third of that went to question three. Nice to do, but not necessarily a need. So on the basis of that, at the next opportunity to have a referendum, I would encourage you and I would ask you that, people talk about transparency. Well, transparency is a funny word. It's really just a matter of exchange of information, constant communication. And I believe the videotaping those kinds of sessions would go a long way to ease the acceptance, if you will, of the referendum. There's never enough information after the fact, there's lots of information. Some of it's even true, as you well know. So what we want to be able to do is to ensure, first of all, that the children are cared for. Second of all, we'd like to get the district to really work to improve the proficiencies, reading, math, language, the basics. We've been here 11 years and we're still in the fourth quartile for district success, if you will. And we need to get that up. We also need to really focus, and I would encourage the board, the president, that there be some sort of formation of people like us to assist in budget preparation in those kinds of fiscal management issues where some of us have had experience with budgets that are much, much larger than that.
Ron, I don't want to interrupt you, but your five minutes are up. Would you mind coming back up when everyone has spoken?
Sure.
Okay.
I would appreciate it, sorry for the time break.
No, it's good, it beeped, I didn't know if you heard it, thank you. Would anybody else like to come up for public comment? Or can he just stay? You like, okay, come on up.
Hello, my name is Thomas Askoff, I'm on Parkside Drive in Forkett River. First of all, I'd like to also echo the sentiments of these guys. I couldn't imagine being on the board through this referendum, it must have been a little bit of hell, right? But to piggyback on what he was saying, in essence, I have multiple children too right now in the district. Actually, three, one's in the nursery school program, which I'm eternally grateful for right now. But one of the things I noticed is through Cedar Creek, which is where my kids go. It was such an amazing experience, the kids could not wait to go to the next level and to meet their new teachers, and the teachers were all so welcoming and the community was so amazing. And then my daughter moves on to, and my son, my son's still in second grade. He has this gorgeous rainbowy path ahead of him at Cedar Creek. But my daughter goes to the middle school, which is a prison. You know, it's, you sit all day, 90-minute classes, two-minute breaks in the middle, no fresh air. It's, the quality of life there is horrible, and the way that, I'm getting to a point, I'm not just putting it down. It's really, it's really like terrible, like a kid either has to, if they're not the kind of kid that can sit all day for 90 minutes, get up for two minutes, have the teacher mad because you're 10 seconds late to class, 90 minutes, two minutes. If you're not the kind of kid that can do that, you have to be on some kind of medicine so that you can. And that's crazy because all science, the, science is solid on this, that your hippocampus is in full development mode during these periods of life. And it requires movement, it requires activity, which gets me to my ultimate point that leads to the budget and everything else we're dealing with now. I think it's time that maybe we start as a district who's leading the way on what you said, low costs and all these different things. Maybe it's time that we reimagine what education looks like and stop following suit of like the Department of Education and all these unions that are facilitating all these rights for everybody. And we start to look and say like, what is the material nature, the organic nature of education? What is this, what is necessary? Because we're not asking that question, because if you look at our record, and it's none of your fault, I don't believe, because you're here just trying to do the things that make the town run, but what is it the essence of why our children are underperforming each year? And really struggling, I think nationally, comparatively nationally. We're a good town, you know, I've been here for, since 2010, and I think it's a great place. I love, I love the park systems, all the things around us. Why don't we utilize that more in education, especially on like the middle school level and things like that? I was listening to these kids at the high school level, and it seems like there's a lot of freedoms there to express yourself and be like amazing. Why is 7th and 8th grade such a trap? Maybe if we just reimagine 7th and 8th grade, we'd save $6 million a year. I don't know, maybe there's something there. But that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody else for public comment? Go ahead.
Jessica DeLuca, Heatherington Court. I really just had two questions, and one was about specifically where that was posted as far as the budget meeting. I don't know if you can put that out somewhere, if you can answer it now, it'd be great. The meeting that you were speaking of earlier, Ms. Claus, about.
Just call my office if you have any questions.
Sure, I'll be happy to do that, absolutely. The next question I did have as well, which I can also send to you if you would like, about the budget, or the budget slide that had all of the salaries on there. One of my questions was, as Sharon was going through the line items about the sports, the transportations, you indicated that the salaries were not included in that. So I was wondering where they were included, if they're not in the salary lines, does that come up in a different line throughout the budget?
It was in the total salaries.
But you had specifically said it wasn't, because you said the salaries are up here, but then you went on to say, the transportation, da-da-da, but that doesn't include the salaries. So were they in the original salary number?
Yes, they're in the total salary line. So when I said like transportation-
It's kind of sounded a little off there.
Yeah, no, no, they're in the total salary line. I was trying to say like transportation salaries weren't in that transportation line.
Because they were all lumped in the header.
In the total salaries.
Just what I want to know. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Go ahead.
Darakanti, 236 Quail Lane North, Lenoka Harbor. This week, I've been communicating with the board and specifically with Mr. Zelinski about graduation. I don't have a budget comment. My comments about graduation, and I want to thank you for your time and your consideration in keeping it in a timeframe that works best for the students. And I really personally, sorry, want to thank you for keeping it where it was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to make any comments?
I'll do it then.
Okay. Anybody else for public comment?
Josh McLeod.
Oh, go ahead. I got to get Ron back up.
John Pinto, Forkett River. I had a bunch of stuff here, but I'm not going to go through it all. A lot of it's already been touched on. Obviously, with the recent events, a lot of people in this room probably know my name. It is what it is. I know some people were thinking that I conspired against you guys and all that. It's not that deep. It's definitely not. I reacted to evidence. That's basically what it is. I hear what we're saying about the Oprah and the exemptions, and somebody posting the cost summaries, it doesn't change the fact that other towns were willing to show these cost summaries to their residents, but you guys weren't. That raises a question. That raises doubt. That's what changed me. As you all know, I met with Mr. Zelinski, I talked to you, Mr. Peters, I was for this thing. I was trying out. Then I felt like I got lied to. All right? And when you're talking about $92 million and somebody lies to you, and then you see another township with this stuff openly, voluntarily on their website, then you see residents in this town that have helped with public bidding before, and they say that the impact on bidding is absolute nonsense. If anything, it could impact it in a positive way. This raises doubt. In my opinion, that's why the whole thing went down. How do we move forward? I know I walked in a couple minutes late, I know you were, I missed the first part of that, I wish I didn't. How do we move forward? Another resident in town, he's not here, he was stuck at work, he raised the idea, and I thought this was a really good one, of setting up an open forum in the auditorium with the board and any resident who wants to attend. This is a back-and-forth conversation, not something like this where we can't get a question answered. You know, we can make comments, we can say things, but we get nothing back. That's got to change. We are the residents of this town. We are the taxpayers. We pay the bills. Okay? So it's a respect thing. If you guys want respect from us, we ask for the same thing back. And everybody, I think, needs to settle down a little bit. There's obviously two, multiple sides to this, there's people in the middle. I try to, I definitely lean more right, if I'm going for the side, but I'm not all the way there. I was fine with the turf field, not going to lie. I still am. All right? I just want to make sure everything is being done above board. Why are we paying architectural fees on existing paved lots to repave them? Did we entertain steel coating on some of those lots versus repaving everything? I mean, I'm going off memory here, but almost a half a million dollars in fees on paving existing lots? That's money better spent somewhere else. All right. I'm not going to, I had some budget stuff, I'm not going to comment on that, I will be at the next workshop.
Okay, good.
All right. Moving forward, you know, like I said, I had a lot of stuff here, I think I'm going to hold off on some of it for the sake of progress and come back to it. But I think the biggest thing is, the one thing I'd like to address is the superintendent search. I met with Mr. Zelinski in his office when I was trying to help, when I was out there, and comment that you said to me didn't sit well. And in light of everything that happened, and another, one of the gentlemen that came up here and he was speaking, you know, and he was talking about the prior sales and looking at win-loss, the loss is a reflection of this board. Because of the way you guys operated this. As he was just saying, not enough information, people saying transparency, stuff like that. It could have been better communicated, and it could have been better delivered, and it wasn't. And that seems to be the problem, in my opinion, of what happened here. So I think moving forward, I think Mr. Zelinski should withdraw his candidacy if he is a candidate for the next superintendent after the comment he said to me in his office, which was along the lines of, I mentioned somebody on social media, which was a ridiculous thing, and I did say that, said they would do the superintendent job for free for five years, which is, I'm sorry, that, it's a little ridiculous, but.
All right, please, please just address me when you're speaking. Thank you.
And Mr. Zelinski responded to me, please, they could have it. I don't think I want our next superintendent to have that feeling about the job. Okay? And I don't think the residents are going to stand for that. So we need to get somebody with new blood.
Your time is up, so thank you. Anybody else?
I tried once before. Sorry, no. No, 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 no. Rachel Gray, 57 Elwood Street. What I was going off of what you just said, I am Rachel Gray, I put in my application to become the superintendent of Lacy Schools. I did offer this, and I'm blessed. I could do this job for free for five years. I sent it off to the referendum person, the headhunter for the job, they denied me right off the bat. They couldn't take it because of ethics, because I missed the deadline. Okay, no big deal. The reason I'm here tonight is to talk about graduation, but I just heard that graduation is staying safe. Is that correct?
High school.
Yeah. That's why I was coming. Staying the 20th, because there's nothing on the website.
19th, no, nothing yet. It's confirmed, but it hasn't been put out yet, so.
Okay. Well, it's already March, so. We had birthdays and plans and parties and, my kid was leaving on the 24th, and I did get a phone call from Mr. Zelinski, and I appreciate that, I just haven't had a return phone call back, because I've been so busy. So I was coming here today to find out what the deal is on graduation. The next thing that I'd like to talk about is the mural, the history mural of the lion that was taken down. I think that was done in the 90s. Just disappeared. Because a student was scared of our school mascot painted on the wall. This was posted on the Lacy, New Jersey Facebook post on January 24th. So I just wanted to make sure that this was accurate information, because not everything is accurate on social media. But 254 comments on how ridiculous this was. But yet, I could walk into the wrestling hall and all of our history is still there. So why take down a mural that a teacher painted? It just baffles my mind. And the referendum, I'm not even going to address it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Regina, go ahead.
My sincerest condolences to the Saletti family. I served two years with Dave. He was a great guy. While many people have thanked me and congratulated me this past week for helping to defeat the $92 million referendum, I'm not happy about it at all. I know in my heart that some of those repairs need to be done ASAP, and many of the HVAC systems are getting old and getting parts to repair them is an issue. With the maintenance staff cut back to just three people, that's right, you heard me correctly, Ms. Ornsby is the person that told me, only three people are left in the maintenance department. Logic says you cannot take proper care of seven buildings with only three maintenance people, in my opinion. Whose fault is that? I would think the administration, because the teachers don't hire the maintenance people, the school board does not hire the maintenance people, the administration determines the personnel for the maintenance department. While I do my best to keep tabs on the Lacy School District, it is no longer my priority. I'm an ex-board member with internal knowledge that most others don't have. And I can tell, it seems that no one takes any extra NJ SBA training here. If you really cared about your job as a board member, you would educate yourself and make it your business to attend workshop in late October of a year, attend county meetings, and work your way towards a master board certification. I think myself and Donna McAvoy are the only two people that ever bothered to get a master board certification. Has anyone else obtained a certification?
We are getting board certification, just so you know. We have been taking, the entire board is getting board certification.
That's been in progress for a while, yes. If the Lacy School Board really cared about the taxpayers, it would return the budget vote back to the people. And yes, it can be done. I tried unsuccessfully to do so many years ago, but you need four votes. If you are in the minority, like Sal, Cheryl, and Dan, that tells you that Kim, Skip, Jack, and Linda are the controlling parties on this board. Ms. Claus, I must tell you, the Facebook reel and infomercial showing your quote from last year saying that you fully support raising the taxes as far as possible, I doubt you will ever again get elected to this board. In fact, in light of some of your antics answering the public on social media, I would ask you to step down, because I was prosecuted on ethics charges for failing to give a disclaimer. Here you are answering the public and commenting without a disclaimer on social media. You can do it, but you're supposed to say you're doing it as a private citizen. I heard that Mr. Peters was also doing the same. Maybe someone will bring you both up on ethics charges, and you'd have a tough time defending yourself with timed and dated screenshots of your comments. You all must remember, you are only in your official board capacity at a legally constituted meeting, no other time. If you don't believe me, please check with the NJ SBA. Your field rep will tell you the same. I cringed when I watched that meeting last year, when you said you fully support raising the taxes as much as possible. Since your property taxes are about 12K a year, your household probably wouldn't even notice the tax increase. But you have neighbors, elderly neighbors on fixed incomes, that have to choose between medicine, food, and taxes. Those are horrible choices that people are forced to make so they can continue to live in Lacy, to be near their family. Have you ever read a tax lien list? It's very scary when you see the names of people you know on it, your neighbors. This past week, one of the Lacy School District employees was on social media during working hours harassing a member of the public for exercising their civil rights. I hope she was a personnel discussion in private session tonight. When she attacked Mr. Bidnick, she was attacking me too, because she mentioned the signs. They were mine. So she was attacking me too. There is school policy in place since 2014, policy number 3282, use of social networking sites. The concluding paragraph of the policy reads as follows, "This policy has been developed to avoid actual and/or the appearance of inappropriate conduct towards pupils and/or the community while using social networking sites. No employee has the right to condemn or berate any member of the public for exercising their civil rights. This person just left the door wide open for a civil rights suit against this district." I have more, I will come back second time. I knew that was five.
Anybody else for first public comment? Richard, go ahead.
Richard A. Bidnick, Lacy citizens and members of the board. One week ago, transparency won over darkness, honesty won over deceit, integrity won over dishonor. Thank you, Lacy citizens. Three passionate, caring, intelligent, driven individuals in our community, including our wonderful graduate of this school, Mr. Gavin Rossi, came together and thwarted the referendum of the Lacy Township School District. The school board spent somewhere in the tune of $130,000, as we spent practically nothing. Our mission was to educate the voters of the many issues concerning this referendum. On that note, I think we did a pretty damn good job. There are many reasons for the referendum's defeat, but one sticks out more than other: deceit. Information that should have been readily available to the public was subverted intentionally to try to thwart this election in the board's favor. That information indeed, when made available from the New Jersey Department of Education, explained everything, and why they did not want the public to have this information. The cost estimates received really did turn the referendum against you. In the end, it was shocking that you could not muster enough support to squeak through Proposition 1 on the referendum, since you touted it as a no-tax increase to the taxpayers. But even that was an utter lie, and the public could see through it. An informed, educated citizenry is paramount to make decisions of this magnitude. All of that information should have been made readily available on the school district's website, just like Lawrence Township School District did. There's no excuses, it's totally unacceptable. We all know what you did, and there are consequences for your actions. Because of this deceit, and this is said with all due respect, Board President Kim Claus and Mr. Skip Peters need to step down from this board. If you have any sense of decency or dignity, I beseech you to do the right thing and resign. I don't see any path forward for the two of you to continue. You deceived the public, and you have lost all credibility. I hope you do the right thing, because if you do not resign, we will probably be forced to go to the Attorney General's office and file an election interference case against the board. Because that was exactly what this was all about. It was election interference. On another note, you also broke your own policies concerning answering public questions on social media sites. Both Ms. Claus and Mr. Peters did so, and Mr. Peters made disparaging remarks concerning citizens in this town when he called them "a few bad apples." Yes, indeed, Mr. Peters, you are right. There are a few bad apples in this town, and some of them are sitting on this board. And since certain members of this board do not follow their own policies, how could anyone expect the employees to? It is imperative at this juncture for the Board of Education to appoint a highly qualified individual as superintendent to turn this district around. Any thought of appointing a sitting employee to this post would be absolutely ludicrous. A thorough cleansing is necessary to conduct the reforms needed to not only restore- A thorough cleansing is necessary to conduct the reforms needed to not only restore public confidence in this board, but to manage the school district on a day-to-day basis. Public confidence has been destroyed. When government works in the dark, nothing ever good comes out of it. Our schools face many issues ahead, but major change needs to happen, and it needs to start happening now with this current Board of Education. On a final note, this Pyrrhic victory is as much a victory for those struggling families and individuals who are barely surviving, who feel they do not have a voice. I, for one, will never forget you and your plight. And to my Lacy Freedom Parents Group formed during COVID, this is as much a victory for all of you as it is for all the citizens of Lacy Township. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, Ron, I'm going to have you go. Oh, you, go ahead. Yep.
Hello, everyone. My name is Morgan Charterina Sullivan. I live on Tappan Street in Lacy, and I am a Lacy resident. I have three children, one that graduated the Lacy Township High School, a middle school student, and a Cedar Creek Elementary student. I first just wanted to start off by saying it's very hard. I'm sure it's hard for you all. It's also very hard for us to come here and speak and sit and listen. Our hearts are pounding. I'm sure your hearts are pounding. It's never easy. I also wanted to say, this whole referendum thing, it made me sick to my stomach, because didn't know what to choose. I obviously don't want my next year, my son, who's going into high school, into high school with rain buckets, like my daughter just went through. But on the other hand, this is going to sound really harsh, and I totally apologize in advance, but on the other hand, I also feel like it is what our amazing new President Trump did, and there needs to be a thorough cleansing on the board like he did. And it's going to get worse before it gets better when that happens, but the quick answer is, oh, you know, more tax money, make them pay more, make them pay more. We've paid enough. And I don't want my child, my children, to continue to be in the schools that they're in. Cedar Creek, hands down, the best school, and I will say that until the cows come home. Cedar Creek is amazing. It truly is a blessing from God. Mill Pond was hell on earth for those children. The middle school, no better. There's police there more than there's not. High school, children are taking their lives left and right. I mean, we got to get it together. We got to do better for these kids. As far as transportation, I immediately thought of the middle school. My son is a football player in Gridiron. There is no transportation for that football team, for Gridiron. They can't transition to a middle school football team, because we can't afford transportation for these kids to play football. That breaks my heart for my son. These kids deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, I'm going to start with the second comment, so Ron. No? You sure? Okay, Regina, you're the last one. Oh, you want to go again? Oh, wait. Uh, you go ahead, you can go.
Just a couple more things. One thing the gentleman did mention, I did have actually in my notes, I didn't get to that point. I also agree that I think there should be some type of a resident committee that is connected to the board on some of this stuff. I don't know how we come about it.
We talked, actually, before you came in, I guess, if you relate. That was a suggestion that the committee's going to meet and reach out to the community.
All right, awesome. That's great.
I know this isn't a back and forth, but were you aware that we did open com, open questions and answers every month at 5:00 before the board meeting about the referendum? Just, did you, were you aware? So we had hourly meetings, and Will presented the referendum, and then it was open to the public for questions, and it went on for a good hour, hour and a half, I guess, every month. So the information was there. I guess what we need to look at is why you guys aren't seeing that, how you didn't get the notice. It's on the website. It was, it's available, but like you're saying, you weren't involved. It was an opportunity for you to come in. It was full. I mean, we had about 75 people each time, I guess. So some people did see that. I don't know why you didn't see that.
I wish I did.
Yeah.
When I, when I learned about the referendum, that's when you learned about me. So I, yeah.
Yeah. So it's been going on, I guess, since August, September. It's been open to the public for a conversation. So we'll work on the communication to get that out to the public even better. We'll, we'll do our best. But we don't post on, you know, Facebook. They do on the, our school page, so if someone doesn't share it, if you're not on it, you might not see it. So just go to the website a little bit more.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And I just would like, I guess, to re-echo. I agree with Mr. Bidnick, what he said. We, we can't have an existing hire as the new superintendent. It just can't happen. The people of this town don't want it. There's too many things that have been going wrong. You're hearing from parents here. Mill Pond, I mean, I've heard the Mill Pond stories since our kids were in, went to Mill Pond. You know, they hated it. The middle school, how this gentleman said, with the, the way it's broken down, like a prison with the times, everything. Maybe this is the stuff we need to look at. You know, maybe this is where some changes could be done that can actually have a positive impact on the kids. I, I have said this before, and I'll say it again, the education system in a town is its lifeblood. If the education system fails, the town fails. It's that simple. You get more crime, you get more drugs, you get more everything. So we have to do something to fix what's going on beyond just repairs and replacements, but also bettering the actual education system that we have here. And let, then we figure out how to do these repairs. We figure out what's a necessity. As you said, the third question was a real problem for a lot of people, as you could see. I think it was like a 70/30 split on that vote. That, that's a landslide. All right? Nobody wants it. Nobody wants that stuff. It shouldn't even come back up again. Let's talk about the first two questions. Let's figure out ways to do it, whether it's a referendum, whether it's piecemealing it, as you guys mentioned in that 28th meeting, with small loans, period, small periods, stuff like that. Let's figure it out. Let's get more people involved. Transparency is the big one. No lies, no deceit, no holding information back, because that's what you did. There's really no way around that. You guys held back information. If another town can give it, you could have gave it too. There's really no discussion there. So moving forward, you know, I thank everybody for their time. I thank everybody that came out here, and I do hope that we can get some good conversations going, and we can work together as a town. I, I'm not going to lie, I tend to agree with Mr. Bidnick and the woman that just came up, what she said about cleaning things out. She's right. You know, I, I don't hide who I am in the slightest bit. Okay? I think everybody knows that. We need to clean some stuff out. If, if, if you, I think Mr. Zelinski actually said this, you know, i, if you were to lose your job or your business started making 15% to 20% less per year, are you, are you going to keep spending the same? Are you going to adjust your budget? Now, I know you have adjusted the budget. Clearly, it's not enough. Got to find other ways. Cut administrators, manage, managers. Talk to the, whatever, things have to change. It's not sustainable anymore. And yes, I know that's not your fault. I will say that in front of all these people. That's not your fault. That's Governor Murphy's fault.
So I would encourage you to come to the next budget meeting. Give us your input. Okay, great, thanks. It'll be posted on the website again. Thank you. Okay, Regina, last one.
Regina Descends of Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach. I do want to say thank you to the 5,599 people that voted on Tuesday, March 11th, to voice their opinion on the district's request for a $92 million bond referendum. Thankfully, many people, 2,899, saw through the smoke and mirrors and voted against this huge referendum that never really gave the taxpaying public the full story about the 19 projects that were buried within the 92 million. They were not all necessities, and as others have said, there were too many frills added to this referendum, like question three, the turf fields being one of the main and major frills. I made an open public records request to the district on January 30th, one day after the January 29th information session meeting. I was refused the request. I had expected much more financial data to be shared with the public at that meeting on January 29th, and it wasn't. We got more information from DeCara Rubino on the solar project. All we got was a bunch of photos showing the extreme neglect of maintenance. No one would let their home get into the state of disrepair that the district had the audacity to show us at that meeting. So I sent a note over to the New Jersey Department of Education, and they gave me all of the information I requested. Some months ago, I made mention to the business administrator about some of the issues that were shown in a report that was done by the architect last year, and I asked, why simple repairs were not done? She told me the maintenance staff was now reduced to only three people, and they can't keep up with the basic maintenance of six buildings, seven if you include the district office. I was aghast, and Mr. Bidnick has mentioned this before. These are our public buildings. They deserve proper care and maintenance. 10 years ago, when I was first elected to the school board in 2015, I heard large projects being put off, and the word referendum was mentioned. I said I will fight any new referendum because of the lies perpetuated in 2008 and 2009 during the solar project referendum. So I made good on my promise in 2025. Solar was supposed to be at no cost to the taxpayers. Where have I heard that line before? The taxpayers are stuck making nearly the full bond payment because the S-Rex tanked, only a few years after the project completion, and we're still paying till 2029. With the overbonding of $8.2 million, we, the taxpayers, are still stuck with the $3.5 million in interest on that one issue alone. With a 33-year veteran board member, this makes, this mistake should not be repeated, and I feel this March 11th referendum was just the solar project in high gear. The thing that was most cited to me by members of the public was the overall price tag. When people heard 92 million, they were like, no dice. Even the least knowledgeable person thought it was just too much money to ask for in one fell swoop. This Lacy district needs a very knowledgeable money manager as its next superintendent. The budget presentation, I found it to be very scary. It looks like the district's on a cliff to bankruptcy, in my opinion, and a combination of factors have led up to this point. Why do you all think Vanessa left? There was no solution, no easy solution.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. We're now going to move on to board committee reports. We did not have policy this month. Let's start with finance with Mr. Conley, please.
Thank you. Tuesday, February 25th, we had a budget meeting, and actually Wednesday, the 5th of March is, well, myself, Ms. Claus, Mr. Peters, Mr. Zelinski, Ms. Ormsby, and, yep, the things that were discussed was the 25, 26 budget. The meeting on the 25th is over at 5:30, and the meeting on March 5th is over 5:35. And then Wednesday, March 12th, finance had again at quarter to 7:00 at night. Myself, Ms. Claus, Mr. Peters, Mr. Zelinski, Ms. Ormsby, kind of update on pre-K project at Mill Pond. That project is complete. We're putting on some final paperwork, and that would be totally done.
Which we did receive.
Oh, even better. Referendum update, had a discussion on the direction on where we go from here. NAWCOW for the paint project here at the high school. They were supposed to be out here at the beginning of March. They postponed. The committee suggested that the district reach out to the board attorney to send a letter over to them. Boiler in the west wing at the high school, the, had to replace a burner tube in it. I believe they were working on that. Talked about the inverter at the Mill Pond School for the solar panels. It's been down since approximately July of '24. We were heading on the referendum to see how we would move on with that. We discussed the facility use fees. Had a discussion primarily in regards to Priority D users, which is outside of district people, and suggested to raise them up by 20%. Core discussion on the 25, 26 budget. Had a discussion in regards to the health benefit plan, and the plan that will be subject to what, tonight's resolution. Chief update on the superintendent search. And then in regards to safety and security, the district, along with the police department, held a tabletop exercise in February and in March in regards to a gas leak and a has casualty event. Discuss the HUSA facilities professional development, the 24, 25 calendar revision, and the green school calendar. And that meeting was over at 7:30 at night. And then, how was it?
Good. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to curriculum with Ms. Walker, please.
Sure. Curriculum met on March 10th. In attendance was Mr. Omato, Mrs. Omato, myself, Mr. Zelinski, Mrs. Amos, and Mr. Dowd, both district supervisors. Mr. Zelinski previewed for us, we saw the pre-K slideshow that he presented tonight to prospective pre-K parents and guardians. On March 24th, it's the preschool registration, so if you're going to register your child for preschool, get up early and get on that computer right away. Correct?
10:00, 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. Mr. and Mrs. Amos and Mr. Dowd continued the discussion of the replacement of outdated materials that need to be budgeted for the 25, 26 budget cycle. This includes K through eight reading replacement materials and high school math materials. And of course, that all is dependent on the budget. Mrs. Amos highlighted the need to continue to look for a replacement reading program for learners that have not achieved the reading benchmarks with their peers. This is a largely special education program. However, some regular education learners will need to enter a reading intervention program as well. Mr. Dowd spoke of the work that his committee is doing to develop an artificial intelligence policy for the district to include a list of AI tools that will be for, that will be for approval used by, for the district. And lastly, Mr. Zelinski talked about the update on the, quote, "building men" program at the middle school that involves about 60 young men every month, and the all-in program at the high school that involves about 15 young women twice a month. And both of these programs are geared to provide the participants with social skills, among other things, to aid in their young development as adults. And then we briefly talked about replacements for staff for next year, and that was it.
Thank you.
It was a short meeting.
Okay, great. Mr. Peters, do you have anything on the referendum?
Yes, I do. Thank you, President Claus.
Obviously, it didn't pass, and I would like to apologize to the students, to the teachers that are in these schools. I'll read some numbers out to you. This is just from Sunday Night Storm. Lacy Township High School, twenty-two stained tiles and leaks throughout the school. Lacy Township Middle School, four stained tile and leaks throughout the schools. Mill Pond School, nine stains and leaks throughout the schools. Little Harbor School, one leak in the school. Fork River School, twenty-one stained tile and leaks throughout the school. Cedar Creek School, thirty-five stains and damp tiles throughout the school, Sunday Night Storm. I apologize as chairperson as the referendum, this not passing. I also apologize for some of the comments on Facebook, but Tom and I actually met and we worked it out and shook hands and realized where we're at and our faults. And we just have to keep our head up and move forward. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm gonna keep my head up like a lacer line. I graduated here forty years ago, and I was taught, head up, move forward, and that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna try and make these schools as safe as possible, even though all the budget cuts that we're having. My intentions are the structural integrity of the schools. What happens every time moisture enters a building? And it's not taken care of right away. Every time it happens. Let's talk referendum about question number three. One of the board members recommended the turf fields. For to bring in jeopardy revenue. It was a great, I felt, and I agree with him, okay? It was a great thing to, we do not generate any revenue in this district whatsoever. We talked about advertising on buses. We talked to Tom Zerri about that and what they did. But what our own goal was with that turf field was to jeopardy, to, I'm sorry, generate, thank you, generate revenue, you know, to come in. There was five different fields included with that. It was girls' softball, I think it was boys' baseball, field hockey, soccer, I think, and lacrosse, where we could have had events all year long with lights out there to generate revenue for tournaments. A majority of our athletes that travel and play on all the fields, play on what? Turf fields. And they're not used to that, and we were just trying to keep up with some of the other school districts and have turf fields, which is minimal maintenance. What's you put it down? The state was paying for forty percent of that. And with that aspect from there, we were gonna try and generate revenue from it. The buildings are no longer, every roof is out of warranty right now. Every roof. If we have a leak in a roof, we have to bring in a contractor or attempt to patch it ourselves. We bring contractors to the high school to say, sorry, we can't do anything for you. We can't patch it anymore. And forty percent of that bill was gonna be covered by the state of New Jersey. So we're gonna have to regroup, punt, figure it out. It's gotta be done. We're gonna have to pay a hundred percent of it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Zelinski, do you have anything else you want to add, or have you?
Just the last thing. We've talked about it a little bit. Miss Conady's here as well. Through the hard work of our high school administration, I know Mr. King is still here. We were able to secure some of the contractors that we had to make high school graduation will stay on Thursday, June nineteenth. The middle school promotion will move. That will be on Monday, the twenty-third, because we are approving a new calendar tonight, because we have to extend our school year by a couple of days due to our snow days. So that's kind of the announcement. Be relieved, and we'll put that on the website the next day or two. So, thank you, Mr. King. That was a lot of hard work today to get that done as well, to make sure that we could secure the right things we need for that date.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, now we're going to board member comments. We'll start with Mrs. Walker, please.
I just very quickly, I just want to congratulate our students of the month on Sun Hero. And listening to everybody talking tonight, the suggestions that you gave about more communication and getting together. We've been talking about that, and it's definitely hurt us, and we need to do that. So I wrote down everybody's comments so that we can get back. If we go back to square one, we have all these notes that all of you very nicely gave us, so thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Armatto.
Yeah, I have a few comments. First of all, congratulations to our seniors tonight. I was impressed by every one of the seniors tonight, but especially impressed with the filmmaker, Diego. My heart went out to him as he was sitting alone to accept his recognition. I'm sure his mom and dad are very proud of him for his recognition and for his list of accomplishments. Just a very special group of seniors tonight, and if you get a chance, please try to go see Diego's movie, Crumbs. I don't know if it's on YouTube or, but I'm sure with the power of Google, and you type in crumbs and you type in his name, you could find the movie. I'm blessed. I've always had my mom and dad around, and when I saw Diego sitting there tonight, he reminded me of what, overcoming things that you can't control. And to me, he reminded me that I could be better. And with the referendum, I think we did do a poor job in executing the referendum and creating timeframes where everyone could be present. I didn't think five o'clock was a good time to have a meeting when people are still sitting in their cars trying to get home from work. Now, yes, we have to, we put the onus on them as well and say, well, we have it videotaped. That's great. But I would like to say, looking around the room, that maybe ninety percent of us have a life when we get home from work, and sometimes that doesn't allow us to go look at a board meeting on videotape when you have one kid grabbing you to help me with this and another one asking you to take you there and there. So we have to do a better job of getting the message out. I was a huge advocate for the turf field. I was a huge advocate for the new basketball floor, all in the hopes of driving revenue back to this district. Now, was it a seven-million-dollar idea? No, it wasn't. It wasn't a seven-million-dollar idea, but it was an idea, having been in athletics all my life and having my own AAU teams and knowing the cost just to enter one of these tournaments, sometimes at the rate of twenty-five-hundred dollars, just to put a team in to play for a weekend. So when I saw the opportunity to do it, I said, you know, maybe we can drive some revenue back to the school and start bringing some things back little by little, incrementally, as they say in the business world. Incremental growth is better than no growth at all. As for the committee chair, Mr. Peters, although he liked my ideas, he was especially just all about one. Okay, I'm gonna give him credit for that. He just wanted the school to be fixed. He wanted new roofs, new HVAC. He wanted to eliminate the leaks and just make it, this is gonna sound corny, make it smell better in the school when it's raining. He was all about reducing energy bills by getting better, I'm gonna see, he'll get mad at me if I don't say this the right way. He's taught me a lot. R.F., what is it, R.F. thirty we were gonna move up to?
We have R fifteens in the roofs now. With the new roofs, the state requires R thirty insulation.
And I got to learn about how that reduces energy costs. So Mr. Peters was really all about question one. He gives me credit for wanting to add the turf field and the basketball court. But those were the small things this referendum was gonna do to bring back revenue to the school. I think we could do a better job of being more transparent. I think we can time this better, and I think we can get this out into the public in this world of social media and Google and this and that, that no one misses a meeting because they didn't know. We have many avenues to get the word out to our community. And, you know, like Mr. Peters said, it's back to the drawing board and see what we could do to stop the leaks and get the air a little cleaner in here and, you know, the mold and all that other stuff fixed. And, you know, I'll give credit to Mr. Binnick. He shared some ideas with me on some programs out there that do turf fields as a grant and/or as a free cost. There's some work that needs to be done, so I'll bring that up at the next committee meeting to Mr. Peters, let him know how we could go about doing that. So there was ideas that came out of this that can benefit us all, and I think you said it best. You know, at the end, what's the win-loss? The win is we got some good ideas. The loss is we learned a lesson on how to better communicate moving forward. So it didn't go this time around, but, you know, we learned some things, and that's huge. And, you know, put our head down, keep our numbers up, and move forward. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Bell, do you have any comments?
Just briefly. One of the things I like about it is that we watched the system work. The board didn't want to make a decision on that much money, so we put it out to the public, and the decision was made. That's one of the great things about our American system, is we let the people vote. And so I'm thankful that people came out and voted. I'm not totally upset at the outcome, but I am thankful that there's been communication. And we've got some guys that have come and given some ideas. When I first started attending board meetings, it was mostly, and nothing against women, but it was mostly mothers and grandmothers. I'm glad that some men have decided they need to get involved, and I know it's not easy. We all have got things going on, but I appreciate watching the system work, and I look forward to continuing to serve.
Thank you. Ms. Armatto?
Yes, first I'd like to thank this board. Today, we all worked together, and we got the graduation date changed back to the nineteenth, and I know that means a lot to a lot of families, so thank each and every one of you for that. And thank you, Mr. Zelinski, for making it happen. In regards to the referendum, I want to thank everybody, regardless of how you voted, for coming out. It was a tough decision for a lot of people. I listened. I took notes on what everyone said tonight. Some of the things I heard which resonate with me, we, as a board voted, I voted no, but last year this board voted to increase taxes nine-point-nine percent. Many families are struggling. We all want our schools to have new roofs, to have A.C., to have turf fields, to be the best. But people can't even afford their bills, and I read some comments online. People can't even pay their electric bills, let alone get a tax increase. So it's really challenging, because on one hand, we need schools improved, and on the other hand, people can't even afford to pay their own bills. Our taxes are going up this year, three-point-one percent. If that would've went through, it would've went up more. So I feel for everybody, because we're all on a tight ship. So hopefully, the economy will get better for all of us. But I want to thank you all for coming out, regardless of how you voted. And I just wish we'd all be a little kinder to one another online. We're all neighbors. We all sit here. We all see each other and shop right, Walmart. Remember that when you're typing things online, you're gonna see these people. So before you write something really nasty to somebody, just remember, if you were standing in front of them, would you really want to say that to their face? We should be a little more kinder. We teach our kids not to bully some of the people that wrote comments. You'd be the first ones, if your child was talked to that way, to come up here and say they have to be hip or suspended. We're bullying other adults. So I really hope that the public would think about that next time we come together, because we're ripping each other apart. This is not to rip the town apart. We need to come together, so just food for thought on that one. I want to congratulate all the seniors, and that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peters, do you have anything else?
Congratulations to the students. Very impressed. Looking forward to looking up crumbs and seeing what that's all about. I'm not going anywhere, Mr. Binnick. Thank you for your comment. I appreciate it, but I'm here for the fight. I'm second out. I'm here for students. So I just have some things that were said during public comment that just baffles me. You have people saying that they were upset about the referendum not passing, knowing the condition of schools, but then they're saying they paid for the signs. So I just, I just don't get that. That doesn't make sense to me. That's not working out. Ms. Sormensby, thank you so much for the presentation. I appreciate that. And yes, we did lose fourteen million dollars over seven years. What was our total staff cuts, Ms. Sormensby? Do you know what, was it one?
Hundred-and-fifty, yeah.
In how many years?
Seven years.
Seven years. We lost fourteen million dollars, correct? And we lost a hundred-and-fifty students. Staff. Staff, I'm sorry, staff. And our student went up a little bit, our ratio went up a little bit. But, you know, people are questioning, well, why aren't the buildings maintained? Why aren't this? Why? Because, yes, do we have to cut a maintenance person? Yes, because we didn't want fifty kids in a classroom. That's why. We didn't want forty-five kids in the classroom to teach us. So do you say, hey, can we get by and handle the buildings as they are? Correct? And cut one maintenance guy? Or do we put forty, cut two teachers? And put forty, forty-five kids in a classroom and make it a safety issue? So that's it for my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conady?
Pretty much everything's already been hit, but congratulations to the seniors. Thanks for coming out to vote. When we go through the resolutions and everything tonight, keep in mind that this is a tentative budget that we're gonna be voting on. It is not the final. There's still work to be done to close the gap. Mr. Sormensby, Mr. Zelinski, the manager, everybody else, thank you for the time and everything you guys have put in to date. I believe we have another forty days to finalize it, and then we go from there. On a brighter note, if you haven't already caught your tickets, March twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirtieth at the high school is the musical. T. Adams, family. Those kids at the school, six days a week till about six at night. So catch your tickets. Thursday, the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, it all starts at seven o'clock, and then Sunday, the thirtieth, it starts at two o'clock. Tickets, they're like eight or ninety dollars apiece. It's, so. That's it.
Thank you. So I said a lot in the beginning before the meeting started, but Ms. Armatto actually said it perfectly. You know, we do need to be kind to each other. Social media is so easy to just spark a negative comment. It's just not right. I think as a community, like she said, we need to come together and be the bigger person. I wasn't gonna bring up the video, but I will, because it was brought up in public comment. I did say we need to raise the taxes, because we needed to. We wanted to save twenty-five teachers last year. The video didn't mention that, that it was about saving the teachers, after we already lost a hundred-and-twenty-five or so. So, yeah, we all did. It was the majority, and I don't know if everybody realizes this, but one person does not make the decision on the board. The majority does. So I can be singled out. That's, that's fine, whatever. If you want to take it out on me, I'm the board president. But there was two community members that came up and spoke that were clipped in that video that had nothing to do with the referendum. So play fair. Don't do things like that. It's just not right for our community. Again, like Ms. Armatto said, it is tearing us apart, and it doesn't have to be that way. We all care about the kids. We all care about our neighbors. We're doing the best we can. Again, we're all volunteer here, and, you know, we follow the process as best we knew how. So we didn't succeed, but we're gonna try again. The kids deserve a better place to come to school. I think we all realize that. So moving forward, you know, please look on the website for ways to get involved with the school. It's, that's our communication line, so please do that. We do make announcements here. If you want to watch the board meetings, some people don't do that either, but we'll do our best. But if you guys need to do your best as well, okay? That's all I have to say. All right, we're moving on to new business. You ready? Okay. A one, page two. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Armatto?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes, but I need to recuse myself on A one, special meeting, executive session three-six-two-five.
Thank you. Mrs. Armatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Okay, I'm gonna recuse myself from February twenty-fifth and March sixth. The executive session had to do with superintendent search, and I am conflicted for that. I cannot participate, so I could not attend those meetings, and yes for the other two.
Thank you. Mr. Conady?
Yes, with the same recusals for the twenty-fifth of February and the sixth of March for the exact same reasons.
Thank you. Mrs. Claus?
Yes. Page two, list of bills, A two. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Armatto?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, I need to recuse myself from A two, two-one, one-two-one-oh, please.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
I'm just checking. Give me a minute.
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes, but I need to recuse myself on my employer, 289299 and 283300.
Thank you. And Mrs. Claus?
Yes. Page 2, A3 to 4, Transfers. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Page 3 to 7, Finance and Facilities. Page 85 to 814, please.
All right, we have two addendums here on number 12. We added adjustment to healthcare costs for the tentative budget. Be it resolved that the Lacey Township Board of Education includes in the tentative budget adjustment for increased cost of health benefits in the amount of $1,428,884. The additional funds will be used to pay the additional increases in the health benefit premiums. And then on number 14, the addendum shows, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 additional use of facilities.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move as amended.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, but I also like to thank the grant fund for raising the $85,000 for the tutoring program for the third and fourth graders. Thank you, I appreciate it. Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
And Mrs. Claus?
Yes, but I need to recuse myself for A14, Lacey Gridiron Football.
Thank you.
Page 7 and 8, A15 to A16, Student Tuition and Transportation. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?